What's on the move?
Hi, Tim.
Agenda these.
Move.
Okay.
And our delegation. It is such a pleasure to be back with you again. Thank you, the podium is yours.
You can show it up.
This is one of those ones that seems Saturday Night Live that I can move around.
No, he got appointed to the press though.
Just joking. Some would be suggesting we should meet outside in like a second hour. Anyways, good afternoon and once again, afternoon there, our councillors and staff. I'm here today, as you know, to deliver my quarterly crime stats and also to bring you up to speed briefly on the auxiliary policing program, our staffing analysis, a little bit on collaboration, that's a ten dollar way, in the valley here and setting priorities again for next year, which means starts people first. So I think you've got the stats in front of you. So you look at, we've seen roughly a 12% decrease in the calls for service in the past nine months compared to the nine months of 2015 here in the town of Comox. We've seen a drop in criminal code files, we've also seen some increases by theft, again, small numbers but went down from 14 to nine. Overall, Comox Valley saw a decrease as well. Crows were down both in the valley and in Comox in particular. Theft of vehicles went from one to four or so. The minors would say that's 100% increase, I would just say it's three more people that have their cars stolen. Theft of vehicle, though, a 50% decrease. So I'm seeing that. Some people are taking me up on my usual ramp, but please lock your doors, I'm glad to see that. We've also seen increases in threats, again up by five, only a bit 23 though in the first nine months. Business breaking enters were up by three as well, that's a problem across the valley lately. And theft under $5,000, almost doubled here from 24 to 43. But in general, Comox is showing the same trends as the Comox Valley as a whole for us, so. You're not outstanding, you're standing out in this, the last few quarters. But we made some good progress in the rest of the east as the past quarter in particular. A theft of vehicle ring, organized group was disrupted, arrested three suspects and since then the numbers have dropped.
Coincidental?
Theft from vehicles as well, three suspects arrested, the number of thefts drops off, one we know left town. So that's good, it's one of our crime reduction priorities. If you can't convince them to adopt the good life or send them to jail, you can give them a vote in town, so that's not a bad deal for Comox here. And business breaking enters, one prolific offender has been linked to seven B E Ds and is currently under charge. Another suspect was arrested for an unrelated charge and held in jail until his trial, that also was timed with a drop in the breaking enter rate. And the recent trend of criminals working together in more than one jurisdiction has also been noticed. Stolen vehicles in Victoria and Ima were turning up here and vice versa. So the street crime reduction units from here and other places in the island collaborated last week, which resulted in the arrest of a prolific offender. And I'm pleased to say that yesterday he pled guilty, he's in jail for the next three months. So it's nice to see that working together is paying off and, but it is of interest to me, the recent change in crime where we're dealing with vehicles in jurisdictions down here or stolen here and moved on, so. The auxiliary program, I wish I could tell you more, but we're waiting for the new guidelines to come out. I'm hoping that our auxiliaries will be able to perform the same duties as they have in the past. And that hope is based on feedback I've got from the councils in here in the valley who are all in support of the auxiliary program. My third point deals with general staffing analysis. That began in late 2015 and we had a year of data ended just before Christmas last year, so now we're into the analysis phase. That's being done for us by some of the other headquarters in Surrey, so we'll have to wait on that. But as I mentioned before, once the results are in, I'll be in a better position to discuss with the town and any efficiencies we can make within the detachment, such as scheduling for peak times and whether we add resource for routine emergency or proactive work. But it will depend on, again, on the analysis of how we're doing. The analysis actually measures the amount of time we spend in investigations in each of the three jurisdictions, so Comox, Courtney and then the provincial area, rather than just measuring files, which is very easy to do, so we're waiting on that. Again, collaboration, we continue to adopt a multi-agency approach in dealing with community issues or chronic offenders or those just in general high risk. One of the initiatives that we started last year was a bylaw managers working group. So the bylaw managers from each of the municipalities and the regional district are meeting at our office a fairly regular basis, discuss common problems and common solutions, so it's power in numbers and more brains at the table, so it's nice to see that that's working out. I'm sure one day they're going to give you the tab for coffee, but we'll wait and see what happens. And also, if anybody was calling Courtney County, City Council meeting on Monday, I brought in Pasca Sky Groves. Skye's our youngest and the newest member of the office, she graduated about four months ago from Dapple in Regina. And part of her field coaching project, which is essentially her on the job training for six months, deals with theft of bicycles. And that is an issue that we're looking at in the valley and with the price of bicycles being more expensive in the first part, it's just influencing the market there. She's working on rolling out an existing app called 529 Garage, where owners, bike shops and the public can report a stolen or found bike. It also includes recording the serial number, taking your photo and fixing your sticker to the bike, again, that's registered on the app. This app, rather than reinventing the wheel, it's the same app that's been used by Vancouver Police as well as the RCP in the nation. So we're hoping to partner up with Crime Stoppers and several bike shops are already on board as we launch this project. Scott will be in, in the next meeting and tell you how she's doing on that. And finally, our annual performance planning. My fiscal year starts April 1st and in addition to the letter we sent to council on looking for suggestions on our local priorities, I spent an hour this morning walking around downtown Courtney and in the mall here in Comox and asking people directly what they thought of the policing issues and how we're doing. Either I intimidated everybody or they didn't have a lot to say other than they appreciated the work we were doing. One person commented specifically on our bike patrol and nobody had any negative comments, so. And I did this in particular, and will continue to do this in particular because our community forum that we held on February 1st at North Island College probably had about eight people show up. So in addition to the people that worked for me that had to be there, so. One of the issues that came up was the lack of participation from the community. $3 parking may have been an issue, the bad weather might have been an issue, but some of them covered and pointed out maybe things aren't all that bad in the valley and so people don't really have anything to tell you, so. The issue is last year, or this year still, road safety, so we're looking to increase enforcement. Organized crime, dealing with coach offenders and drug trafficking, or violent crime, we're looking at reducing victimization. We've rolled out the DARE, Drug Awareness Resistance Education, in most of the schools that would take it. We've rolled that program out by bringing back a reservist who worked in a different detachment and we're using some of the money from some of the long-term illness physicians and hiring her, so she's doing that this year. And we're also rolling, I think we're rolling up tomorrow in one of the high schools and then another on Friday, a program from a specific city place that deals with the licensing violence. The video that they produced was produced locally with student actors. It was very well done and the only time you see the police mention it is in the credits at the end. So it also comes with a discussion package to take the discussions which way we want to steer them or the students want to steer us. So it deals with suicide, mental health, relationship violence, reporting, reporting racist violence to others and what students can do or young people can do to support each other. And it's kind of timely because as it today is, we all know that picture data is in the building, so. That's about all I have here today. Any questions, clarifications, as usual, please ask.
Councillor Hough.
Thanks, you're very good. You had mentioned the bylaw officers getting together. What are some of the common bylaws, do you know, do you have any?
Some of the ones that have come up, I dropped in the last meeting, it was some of the use of property, people, single residence area now has people living in ready-up basements or garden stands or garages, pulling a trailer on there was one issue. There's two spots, I think, in Courtney Regional District that came up. That was the issue that I think I dropped in on last time. It's, I don't think they got into the parking issue, but it's the compliance, education compliance strategy, some of the people cross different borders, there's some landlords that have properties in each different area, so everyone knows the situation in our community, so.
Okay, thank you.
Heather, what's your app? Councillor Keane?
Yes, thank you, Tim. I answered some of my questions for the auxiliary program, waiting for the new guidelines, thanks for that. My one comment is in regard, I was pleased to hear that, well, the connections with the schools and programs, I've introduced a couple of programs there. The one that I encourage, if you're asking for priorities, is the scare and the worry about the fentanyl situation. It's beyond scary in our province, as you well know, and wondering if it would be worth investing some time and working on with schools and young people on that. As you know, young people are susceptible to not thinking through the consequences of their actions and experimentation is one of them. I have to say that even within my neighborhood, sadly, a youth passed away due to the fentanyl, not in our community thankfully, but nonetheless, that's happened. So I just encourage any kind of connection with the schools. And I'll end by saying, I cannot tell you how powerful the impression of a RCP person, whether it's one-on-one in a classroom or in an assembly for students, and they may not get through to all of them, but there are many there that will, it'll make a difference in their lives for hearing a story, the more graphic, the better. And just encourage that as a priority. It's pretty frightening as you know, our police chief knows, everyone knows.
Our media person, community relations person, school liaison person, Rob Gardner is working, I'd say, with the schools and meeting with the guidance councils, I'm told, on a regular basis, so we'll continue to monitor that. I know I had dropped in with the principal of one of the high schools, it was last year, we just had a chat aside of the, the topic, the chatter came up. It was just those casual conversations, sometimes I have to hit sparks and some action, but I'll note that. One of the things that I will tell you about the fentanyl overdose, the opioid overdose lately is, we get called on by B C ambulance for two reasons usually. One is because there's a concern or threat to ambulance safety, ambulance personal safety, or one there's been an actual fatality, sudden death. Those that don't fit in the two categories, we don't get called anywhere. And so we are not, we don't attend as many as we used to. But we have had occasion, I'm thinking six weeks ago off the top of my head now, where B C ambulance was stuck and called us to, for an overdose. And two of my members attended, seen administered fentanyl, which we've issued to all of our, sorry, issued, not so, which we've issued to all of our members for our protection, used to obviously individual, saved his life. So that was one of those, I guess, bonuses to us, us carrying it. But it has, I think everybody in the detachment has tended, tended an overdose in the past year, a year or two related to drugs, so. It's, we're one part of the puzzle, one part of the solution.
Please do your proactive work and continue it, please.
Yeah, I mean, we've got education, we've got prevention, we've got treatment, you know, as well as the enforcement side of the house, so we're quite one, one part, so we're going to keep that up. And I'll see what our DARE instructor, see what she's hearing from the schools and then we've got the assemblies tomorrow, so we'll see when that's, how the topic goes up. Thank you, thank you for your question.
Passer Smith.
Just a simple question, Tim. How many people do we have working at the detachment? How many officers?
I have 63 approved positions and another 21 support staff. So we have a one to three ratio, which is pretty good as far as the ratio goes. Certainly not like it was when I started where you have a couple of people in the detachment in one click. So we've, we're using civilians a lot more in the last 20 years, I'd say, to do tasks traditionally done by police. So we get the chance, we get, we get expertise and it's a cost-saving to the taxpayer, so. And then in addition to that, as you know, there's other, other RCP in the valley here that don't, aren't part of the detachment, they belong to the district, so the trafficking unit does Highway 19, there's two of them, one's out of Campbell River, runs out of here, and the helicopter, the traffic analyst, as well as there's a general investigation, a plain closure unit that helps the detachments north of here, the smaller detachments, but they're in the valley as well, they don't, they don't report to me. But if we necessarily, we can use them. So we're pretty lucky that way, a little out there.
Thank you. Councillor Grant.
I was just wondering how you would rate our community as far as safety is concerned? Like, I feel like we have a fairly safe and community here.
Yeah.
Comox especially, but up on ours, like, how would we compare with, say, other places on the island, Campbell River, Couch and Duncan, those kinds of, that are sort of a similar size?
See, I'd like to turn that question back around and you can say, how safe do you feel? Because it's not really about me, it's about how you feel.
Well, I always, I mean, I don't feel like I, I never have any, what I do.
As I might have said a dozen times, so, I mean, Comox is just about the safest place you can be in B C, according to the privacy of our index. We're up there at the top of the list, we're just at the top of the list. And the rest of the valley is on the good side of path. So it's, I consider it a fairly safe place. You know, I've seen people my mother's age walking the dog in the dark and it's any concern from them, so. We don't have the violence here. If you look at the, look at the, one of the indicators is how many police you have for the population. And our numbers aren't, aren't that high compared to Port Alberti, for instance, or Campbell River, which I believe, I, again, I just say, don't quote me.
Hey, you're on camera.
Yeah, off the top of my head, the fence per population needs higher than most other communities. We're pretty fortunate here and I won't take much of the credit for that at all. I mean, it's, it's the demographic, it's the people that live here, it's a million different factors and we're a small part of that, but people lock the doors and the more, we have more, we'd be safer than that.
Well, that's the feeling I get, but it's just, you never know what's going on in the, the underbelly of your community, sometimes there's stuff going on that you don't really see too much, but it doesn't sound like we have a whole, it sounds like we're in pretty good shape.
You know, if you're, if you're a 17-year-old girl who's getting abused, I mean, he has no, doesn't feel they have no place to go, you probably could feel, you're feeling very vulnerable and that person would probably argue that this is not safe for us to be or have seen that's trying to get by and not, you know, not getting what the person needs, and you'd probably argue that's probably not as safe as I think it is even, but it's, I think in general, again, I'm walking around and trying to force people to, convince people to give me suggestions on, make a comment on how we're doing and I'm not getting the negatives, not getting the negative. Given our public complaints, they're not, they're not that, they're not high, you know, people actually take the time, they inform and complain about the service they're getting, it's not, it's not that high, so I think we're doing well.
Okay, thank you.
Comox is a good safe place to live. And also, I have a note here, our mayor obviously is missing the town and all of us here because he had to write a little note. And the note says, as he compared your stats here, Jim, that interesting that calls for service in the town of Comox were down, but stayed, staying safe in Comox Valley as a whole, all. So it is good that he's keeping an eye on us. And I have just one quick question, please. We obviously have good reason to expect that marijuana is going to be legalized sometime in the future. I was wondering if that expectation was seeing an increase in grow offs?
There are a substantial amount of grow offs that have grandfathered under the old legislation in the valley and there are enough of them that are, I believe, that we believe are abusing that license. We have dismantled, disrupted one there last month, month before, and to see, you know, street people coming out employed in that place to take the buds off the plant and clip the buds, and some of them were just barely old, they're my daughter. So it's, 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 yeah, it's an industry, it's a legal industry right now. So we've not turned a blind eye to it and this is everything we've, I guess, the end of January is the last one we've done, so the profits are quite substantial.
I just wondered if the polls legalization, it's all, but obviously you've done a great deal.
It depends on what, on what the legislation looks like, I haven't seen it, I don't know if it's written yet, to be honest with you. But I mean, you well know that one of our communities in the valley here is taking a different approach and, but that's up, that may be, may be an option under the legislation, maybe it'll be provincial, I don't know where the level's going to be, as if the federal government forgets to retail sales and if they do, who's going to legislate it, because it'll be provincial abuse, so that'll be, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see it. I'm sure that our headquarters in Ottawa will be studying as well for looking at it, looking at a national approach to it, but it's still illegal, there's no way to sell marijuana illegally in storefront in Canada, period, full stop, so.
And that's where it is right now? Well, I don't see any further questions, thank you very much, Jim. Always, always good to see you on this annual report, appreciate your time. It's on the agenda, minutes of meetings and that is mail and department reports is also mail, and that case says to staff reports, the utility billing for 550 Colby Road. Holy roll. And this is all about a waiver of $87.36 billing for 2016 water use on 550 Colby Road.
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second it.
Any comments, discussion? Councillor Smith.
I'm in favor of this recommendation, but perhaps we can use this as a learning experience and I think there is a lot of confusion out there regarding our water system and how we charge. So I think particularly with people with paying a flat rate, there may be some confusion around, you're paying a flat rate, you don't realize, even though I think the letters are pretty clear, that you might include essentials regarding the flat rate and the possibility that you might be going under these circumstances, so. But I am in favor of this recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor McKinnon, advice?
Just my interpretation, reading through the notes from it, is that it sounds like both parties, the town and the individuals, thought they did everything right in explaining to each other, so Councillor Swift's point is well taken, is that I don't think there is any ill will intended here by either party and it's unfortunate, but we want to maintain our charges and our fees for people that abuse it and it's an awkward one here because I think there's, there's good intentions on both parties here, but just it was misinterpreted. So clearing up the communication in whatever way possible and it's not easy. When you read that, if you're not a technical expert and for many of us, that's, we're laypeople, that it's difficult to read those and understand it clearly. If I do there.
Any other comments before we ask the question? The motion being, I will repeat it then, no waiver, we provide for the $87.36 billing for the 2016 water use at 550 Colby Road. All in favor? Now pull this motion through. And correspondence, and again, Inspector LeCalle.
I'll move receipt, second.
Now, are there any comments with regard to the annual performance plan that he put forward in his letter in the correspondence?
I would like to see the draft come to us prior to them finalizing it, so we can review it.
That sounds like a good suggestion, yes.
I thought so. Yeah, so I'll move that, I'll move that we get a draft, review the draft prior to the implementation of the 2017 annual performance.
I'll second it.
Good suggestion. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, period. And the next one is the letter from CBRD regarding our regional district water and the ministers meeting.
I would move receipt of that.
Second, thank you. And comments?
I could just give you guys a little background on this if you would like.
Please.
So at the regional district meeting on our, not the last boil water, the one before, I made a motion at that meeting, if you go down to the second page, you can read the motion, and it says that a delegation comprising of representatives from Corvey, Comox and the regional district board chair be sent to Victoria to meet with the ministers of health, forest land, natural resources. And the idea was to talk about resolving the issue in Percy Air Street, which in my opinion is being caused by a spillway that Cumberland put in with the okay from the province, and that we get asked for some leniency on the N T U issue so that we're not continually having these boil water advisories as we wait for the filtration plan. So that was the motion. The notion that Cumberland may be invited to that meeting was brought up. I was exceedingly clear that I didn't think that that was a very good idea in that they're the, they're a party to the problem and I believe that it would weaken our position if we, if they came down and we were discussing this in front of the ministry and they're basically just going to say the exact opposite that we are. So I, so we had that discussion at the meeting, the motion was brought up and you read the motion that passed unanimously. Following that, the chair of the board and the chair of the water commission took it upon themselves to send this letter and invite the mayor of Cumberland to the meeting, which flew directly in the face of what we talked about at our meeting. So I thought it was important that we brought it to this table to discuss what our possible solutions to this could be. I think we've been put in a really awkward and bad spot here in that it's my opinion that if Cumberland comes, it will weaken our position as we go, as I said before, but I think that if we were to take a drastic step and say, we're not going to go because of this, then it would weaken our position even more. So we've kind of been put into a box here. So we've kind of been put into a box here, and I'm not really sure of what we should do about this. But I take this really seriously, because this is a, we're talking about up to $150 million that we're talking about. It's the biggest deal that any of those people have ever been involved in in their lives by a hundred miles, and to just willy-nilly go on your own and make this, you know, this is a serious, serious issue, both financially and for the health of our citizens, and I think that it requires a lot more thought than just to take it upon yourself to do this. I also look at the Chair of the Board and think, "He's got twelve people in the water system. This isn't affecting Area A hardly in any way at all." So for them to do this, I just find, anyway, I would really like to hear comments from you guys and any possible solutions that you think we could come up with.
Free, I open the floor.
Yeah, a question through Mayor to Counselor Grant. Is Cumberland taking any ownership of this issue? Could you see discussion prior to you going down, where you could find some common ground and deal with that? Because I wholeheartedly agree with you, you go down there, and you guys are going to be at opposite ends.
So what happened when the perseverance creek thing first came up is we talked to Cumberland, we got the old, "Yeah, well, we'll look at it sometime in the future, maybe." We then sent a letter to them saying that we were going to take this to the dam safety commission, and that we gave them a couple of weeks to reply to us on anything they were going to do. They ignored that letter completely, we heard nothing. Then we sent the actual complaint down to the dam safety division, and all of a sudden they, they had, you know, that sort of got their attention a little bit, and they woke up and realized we were serious about this. But again, it was the same old answer of, "Well, we don't really have the money, and we're working on our own water, and we'll get you guys sometime." And of course, the answer to that that I brought was, "But we have a problem now, and you're causing it, so we'd like some resolution to this." So again, you know, we go further down the road, we get another bottle of water, and I think it's time that we go to a different level. So my opinion is that Cumberland isn't really taking this overly seriously, and that they've got their own fish to fry, I guess, over there, they're trying to fix their own water system. They're applying for money out of the exact same pot that we're going to be applying for money out of, so, I mean, everywhere you look, it's just weakening our position.
So your earlier motion, though, was pretty clear. Can that invitation not be rescinded to Cumberland? And if they want to tag along and have their own meeting after your meeting, I mean, they're more than welcome to.
Yeah, we don't have any say on what they do, but I guess that would be one option, is to ask them to...
A motion is a motion, it was passed.
And it's crystal clear, yeah. So I guess that's why I'm here, is to see, I mean, that may be one possible solution, for sure, so.
Other comments?
One question on the motion, Ken, you said it was, it was passed unanimously?
Yes.
Representative Cumberland?
Cumberland doesn't sit on the water, they have their own.
Counselor Swift, did I see?
Well, I was just going to say that the individuals that sit on the Water Committee are the ones that have the best interest in this, and they have the most knowledge, and they've passed this unanimously, and I believe the correct thing that we should do is ask them to honor that motion and have their committee comprised of the people that make up the Water Committee that were dealing with it. So I don't see that Cumberland has a role in this particular meeting, and I think they should, they have their wholesome discussion at their table, and they pass an unanimous motion, so that should be the way it's done.
Would you be willing to put that in form of motion?
Yes, I would.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Probably your motion. To Shelley, so is there a way to, that we can force this motion that would exclude Cumberland? Because the motion is pretty straightforward. Is there a way that, a mechanism that we can go to that, you know, Counselor Comox feels that this motion was passed, and we feel it's in the best interest to stick to the wording of that motion?
I would suggest...
What I'm trying to get at is maybe we don't need a motion, we just enforce that motion.
A letter to the Water Committee, I think in terms of enforcing the motion, it should come from the Water Committee. But in terms of Comox's feelings regarding it, a letter to the Water Committee would probably be a good idea.
So I think that if we looked at something like Counselor Swift's motion, it still leaves our options open for us a little bit. We can say, "We feel that you've conovered this motion, and we feel that you should stick to that motion, and we would like you to rescind." Now, if they don't do that, we still have a door open to come up with another solution to this if we choose to. So, you know, it's, to me, that's probably a pretty solid way to go, I would think, as far as we're concerned, anyway, but again, I leave it, I leave it up for you guys.
Are you comfortable with seconding that motion?
What's my motion? My motion being that the Water Committee, or the committee, what do we call it? Yeah, so the Water Committee that's attending the ministers meeting should be consistent with the unanimous motion of the Water Committee. No, that's all confused.
I got it. All reworded, yeah.
And upon the rewording, second. I know, yeah, I know.
Yes, I understand the intent of the motion, and that it was voted on unanimously with the Water Commission. But surely the ministers, provincial ministers, at one point or another down the road are going to want to talk to Cumberland about it. And I say we carry on with the motion here, but we'd be naive, or at least I think I'd be naive, to think that they're not going to contact Cumberland at some point to find out their version of their sense of the problem, et cetera. And so I understand why you're trying to follow the original motion, it was unanimously passed, but I think it needs to be said that we're hoping that there's a clear discussion that happens, and that there's going to be consideration from the ministers to listen, to hear from that community as well. So what's the difference in hearing one group and then another group waiting at the door to come in next, or hearing together?
Well, I kind of agree, I agree that there will be a time when perhaps that's proper, but I can tell you that if they're sitting in the room and we start squabbling with each other in front of them, or that, that's going to look silly, and I've been there and done that before, so I don't want to do that again. I think also that there would be certain things that you might want to say in a meeting like that, that you may not say because they're there, and I think it's important that some of those things be brought to light. I think there's bigger issues here that need to be dealt with. The other thing is that you, when you go to these meetings, you get about twenty minutes, so you don't have a lot of time to make your points, and of course, we would have to have some of the RD staffers come with us, because there's a lot of really technical data that needs to be looked at, and the ministers will have their own technical staff there, too, so that'll take a bit of time. So I think for the first step, for sure, this is the way, there might be a time in the future where you're correct, but I think for this meeting, that's, and then that was the intent all the way. And we did discuss that openly at the Board as well, so.
Well, yeah, that's what I was just going to say, that those are the kinds of things that the Water Committee should decide and be discussing, and this isn't what they decided, so I think for the purposes of this one, we should stick to what they decided.
Your motion stands?
Let's hear what the motion was.
So I have that the delegation to the ministers meeting be consistent with the unanimous motion of the Water Committee.
That says it?
Am I happy with that?
Are you still willing to second it?
I would second that, yeah.
All in favor? No, Paulus, motion carried. Oh, Shelley, I'm sorry, you have to stand up and holler, we have a new mayor here, she's not...
In addition to that, I just did let the mayor and council know, because I actually also went to the Comox Valley Board Directors as well, and I got approved there, and they referred it to the Water Committee. So they already approved that it would go, that the letter would go, I think the letter was sent saying that it would be Courtney representative, Comox representative, CBRD representative. So then that was referred from the Board, being approving that motion to the Water Committee, then had that discussion.
Well, that's good to know.
So just to let you know, it went through the Board first, and they approved it, basically saying three representatives, and then it went to the Water Committee.
Thank you very much for that.
Just to let you know, it went through another...
Good information, yes, thank you. And now, the last bit of correspondence for this evening is, one more time, Information Re-eco Asset Symposium, written by Tim Ennis, or presented by Tim Ennis this time, and also I might mention in our correspondence, our council correspondence, Megan Kirstens has also written a letter and an invitation for us to attend the symposium. So.
I would like to make a motion that, so, down, even though we don't normally give grants to these types of things, I think a token fifteen hundred dollars to assist in this event would go a long way in having the communities work together, so I would move that we... Yeah, receive, I can give fifteen hundred dollars in credit.
You're moving that, does someone second that?
I'll second that.
I always get torn when these organizations come for money, because there's so many good ones out there, and we get continual requests, and I think I've, sometimes been disappointed when organizations haven't been given money, but at the same time, a little bit relieved, because it doesn't put us in a position of having to choose between organizations and what our taxpayers as a whole should be supporting. I believe this is a great organization, once they've got some great speakers, and I would really encourage people to attend, but I don't think we should be going against our policy by supporting funds.
Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Arnott?
I'd just like to say that I agree with you, and that's why we deal with these on some one-on-one basis, and I think this, because engages the whole community, the whole valley, and it's something that's near and dear to all of us as sustainability practices. I think a small token towards that would go a long way in, maybe helping alleviate some of the concerns we have with the dam water CD thing, whatever it was, but, you know, and working together, and...
Any other comments?
I'd just second what Counselor Russ said, that there's times when we have to show some leadership in bringing parties together in a community, and I would support this as a one-off, and review after the symposium, if it does pass, that, to see if it was successful, and get a review from staff, as well as from council members, to see if it wasn't worthwhile endeavor.
And so I guess, I'm a little bit torn on this one, too, because I guess I can look back into history, back several years ago, when we used to get a laundry list of these things coming to us all the time, and, you know, we were always trying to choose and decide, and it was always really tough. When I read this one, though, I kind of see that there could be a lot of real positiveness come out of this. So as much as I kind of agree with Counselor Swift that we should be not doing, not giving out grants and aid, when I look at this one in particular, I guess I could make an exception for fifteen hundred, but I really don't want to go back to those days where every group that, you know, they just, they just line up and they come, and of course, I guess the other problem that I have with giving out grants and aid is that it's not our money, it's taxpayers' money, and so I don't know how we decide what our taxpayers think should be the right cause. I mean, there'd be some people that would agree wholeheartedly with this, others that would totally disagree. It just puts you into a bit of a conundrum most of the time for me, anyway, but I could see my way clear on this one to do that, but I certainly wouldn't want to open the doors to all of those groups coming on a regular basis.
If I might ask a question of you, Shelley, the policy, it's, I, can you, is that something you could quickly, to tell us exactly what that does say?
It is included in your agenda, but in other...
And the policy reads, except as otherwise decided by Counselor. Annual grants will only be given... That's a helpful one. That's in our case. I'm always concerned about setting a precedent, and although I certainly agree with everything that Counselor Arnott and Counselor Grant have said, because the policy at M, Counselor McKinnon, the numbers are adding up, right? But I would, I do not like having a policy in place and then constantly changing. I'm glad we changed it last year, and now we're going to change it again this year. And last year was equally as important as this one, and I agree, I intend, I intend to attend the symposium, I feel very strongly that we do need to support it. The council policy really makes it difficult, so, and I think I'm going to waffle just a little bit more, because not all of our council are here, and our mayor isn't here, I would really like to hear his position on this as well, and because there's only one week, that's not going to make the difference, because this is May the fourteenth, fifteenth. Should we determine then to give the dollars, then there still is time, so I think I would probably support it. But I would like to hear from you, Dr. Stroud.
Well, yeah, we do have a quorum, so I think it's fair enough that the motion is out, that we should hold that vote. But also, we're not changing the policy. You know, the policy is the policy, and we all understand that, but, you know, we're looking at it on a case-by-case basis as these come through, so I think it's important to understand that the policy is not being changed.
No, no, not changed, but certainly it sets a precedent one more time, doesn't it? Last year, it was, of course, for...
Yeah, and that's, and I think that's why we're here, to represent the public, and I think we all have our different views that we bring to the table, and for me, this is one of those things where I think it helps the whole community, so.
I'll follow the question.
Yeah.
All right. And the motion is?
I'll just add one last comment, if I could, is that one thing that influenced me is I know it's the people that are supporting this, it's conservation groups for sure, but it's also, has a pretty powerful support from the Real Estate Foundation in B.C., so seems to me it's something that we can look at as extraordinary for bringing a community together to look at these issues, and a one-off, and makes it different than perhaps your normal symposium or request for funds for grants and aid.
Are you making a motion, Counselor Arnott?
Yes, please.
Could you make it, please? Yeah, that the town of Comox provided a grant of fifteen hundred dollars to assist with the...
And seconded, I don't remember?
I checked.
You did, okay.
And that we received, that we received.
And yes, right, too, okay, thank you. All in favor? I'm convinced. Opposed?
What's our own voice of reason?
We just spent fifteen hundred dollars in salary dollars here.
Motion carried. And there's nothing from the public, although if the media had something to say, we'd be happy to listen. No, you're good. Let's have a move for your drink.
Move, second.
But don't run away, please.